Okay, then I would like to call to order the meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Cone? Alderman Orion?
Here.
Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Velazquez? Alderwoman Sanye?
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge?
Present.
President Green?
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Cone? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Velazquez? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Eight present, you have corn.
Corn being present, we need to reestablish our Committee of the Whole for this session since we are in a new session now. So pursuant to the Board of Aldermen Rule 6 and Section 52 of Roberts Rules of Order, I would move that we move into the Committee of the Whole to discuss the RAMS settlement funds.
Second.
It's been seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by your vote. You sustain the motion to enter back into the Committee of the Whole. And at this point in time, I will turn it over to Alderwoman Sanye as Chair of the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the Board. We will dispense with line items four and five, which will include a presentation from Kurt Koby from the Water Division to present on our city's water infrastructure. I would ask that members of the Committee hold your last questions until we get to line item eight. Thank you for being here, Director Koby. I'm going to just swear you in first. Please affirm that what you're about to say here is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and with that, you may begin.
Okay. I'd like to thank the Committee for allowing me to be here today to speak before you. I am... Drinking water is a valuable resource touching the lives of every citizen and business each day in the city. The Water Division is an enterprise fund that is funded by the fees that are charged for the services that we provide. We have two water treatment plants, approximately 1,300 miles of water main with assorted valves, fire hydrants, and other attachments that we maintain and operate. I provided a couple of lists for you to see, to talk about some of the projects we have coming up. For the audience, I have some copies there on the table next to the signup sheet. The first one is the Status of Capital Projects. We've identified 14 of them that are a priority with us. I'll just briefly read through them, or the titles of them. Rehabilitation of the river intake at the Chainer Rocks Water Treatment Plant, that's an estimated $11 million project. Conduit number one, main rehabilitation, that's a $6 million project. Hampton Avenue Water Main Replacement/Rehabilitation is a $5 million project. Substation power distribution upgrades at both of the city's two water treatment plants, $6 million. Replacements of pumps, motors, and controls at the plants is $15 million. Small diameter water main replacement, this would be spread throughout the city, is $20 million. Replacement of water mains in East Grand, that's $1.2 million. And we have obtained, or seeking to obtain, funds from the City Opera Funds to do this project. We have a water main in Vacated Lawton Place and Teachers Drive that needs rehabilitation, that's $1.5 million. Conditional assessment of transmission conduits, this is from our Howard Bend Plant in Chesterfield into the city, that's a $4 million project. Howard Bend Water Treatment Plant, electrical relocation, a $2 million project. Rehabilitation of a softening basin at the Chainer Rocks Water Treatment Plant, $3 million. Rehabilitation of the Chainer Rocks Filter Plant under drains, we have 40 filters up there that we need to renovate. And this project is $10 million. Renovate the two river intake towers at the Chainer Rocks Treatment Plant, $15 million. And lastly, on this list is emergency backup power to water treatment plants, $30 million. And all but one of these, we are currently seeking a funding source for. In addition to this list, I have included a list of projects that we have done and funded through our revenues, our annual budget. And a lot of these projects are things that broke that we need to repair to maintain service to our communities. And I'm not going to read them all, I provided them for you. But in general, these are pumps at the treatment plant, intake refurbishment at our Howard Bend Plant, SCADA, that's the control and data acquisition system at our treatment plants, and distribution system, and some other miscellaneous projects. In addition to these projects, the EPA is in the process of finalizing a revised lead and copper rule. We have a number of things that we need to do with this new legislation. One of them is create a database that'll be available for the public to look up the resident's service line to record whether it's a lead service line, a non-lead line, or a unknown. And we have the database structure, but we have like 60,000 unknown service lines. We don't know what materials they are. But in the state of Missouri, they are managing some federal dollars actually to help with this, utilities with it. And we have applied for grants for a number of projects to help with this. Is the lead service line inventory grant, we have a $200,000 grant. We're seeking a 400, additional $400,000 for the inventory. We are seeking a $50,000 grant for a lead service line replacement plan, and a lead service line replacement grant of $5 million. And we anticipate that additional monies will be made available from the state for these efforts, and we will seek them when they're come available to apply for. We have been seeing additional revenue coming into the rate increases that were passed last year, the 20% July 1st of last year, and then another 20% January 1st of this year. We are seeing probably around $8 million money coming in currently on this, but we have not seen the full benefit from the January rate increase because of our way we bill quarterly is typically it takes six or seven months before we know the full benefit of any rate increase. We also have started looking at doing shut offs. We stopped during COVID. We have started up again for commercial properties in March, and that is seeing additional revenue coming in. We are making plans for starting shut offs for residential accounts that are delinquent. We're not ready to start that. We are putting in place a assistance program to help with some of the people that qualify that may need it to help catch up on their bills. But this isn't quite ready to roll out for the residential. The water capital projects that I listed, that's $128.5 million worth of capital improvements that we need. In that alone, there's, moving forward in the future, we'll need additional funding for that. We are also pursuing additional sources of revenue I outlined earlier through the state, and collecting payment and other grant opportunities as they become available. The RAMS settlement represent an unprecedented opportunity for the city. The promise idea of potentially using the RAMS settlement funds for our municipal endowment fund is interesting. Such a fund with its promise of annual income could be beneficial to the Water Division as well to all the city's infrastructure needs. This would be a win-win for the city of St. Louis and be helpful for us. With that, I'm open and available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Koby, for that presentation, compiling all of that data and making water infrastructure a little bit more juicier and spicier than usual. We will first begin with public comment. And so the procedure for the testimony will be as follows. If you wish to speak and you're online, you want to make sure that you hit the raise hand icon. It's a zoom function on your screen. This will allow us to see that you want to speak. Only people showing a raised hand will be called on to speak. When I'm ready for you to speak, I will let the clerk know, and you will be moved over from attendee list to participant list. And then you'll be moved back over once you are done. I'm going to ask you for your name and for your ward number, and then swear you in. So for each person, I know this is a little new, but we are going to have to swear in on a one-by-one basis. So as we pull you over, each individual, I'll ask you your name, your ward number, and then once you give me that, I will proceed with swearing you in. And with that, we can go with the first speaker. I am not sure exactly what this name is, so I apologize in advance. Feel free to correct me. Undulo? My undulo? Okay? Gwen Cuffel? Gwen Kautchul?
My name is Gwendolyn Coxey, and I'm a little confused. I thought that we were here to talk about the survey that you all took in the process. I'm here to talk about, I'm against it, the process that you all took to how you came up with the list that you came up with, like the childcare and stuff like that.
Okay, so we're going to, each speaker will have three minutes. Today's topic, as a result of the surveys and the requests, one of the top responses was water infrastructure, so that's why we brought Mr. Scobie out to give a water presentation. But I'm not going to tell you what you can and can't say for your three minutes. So if you, we've got your name, just give me your ward number, and then I'll get you sworn in.
Gwendolyn Coxey, Ward 10.
Thank you, Ms. Coxey. Do you swear that your testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Okay, I want to talk about the outreach. I wanted to know what kind of budget that you all had for outreach. I didn't see the survey until three days after, when the survey was closed. I felt like the people who knew about the survey had a better opportunity to take part of that. A lot of people voted for infrastructure, of course they will, because they would do that. I lost $1,000 running over a pothole, and the city streets are horrible. And we've been promised that the streets were going to be taken care of. I know when Lyda Krusson was in office, she made a deal with Spire that she was going to pave over the holes that they're putting all over the city. It looked like patches all over, but she left office and threw that over, I guess, to Shara's budget. But I want to know about the budget that the city has. Everybody talking about a budget for infrastructure, what happened to the budget for 2022, '23, and 2024? I haven't seen any of that done. And like I said, I don't like the process was done because we was promised money for infrastructure on the Opera Funds. But I'm here, since I'm talking about recreation, that's what we wanted. 740 Union, the old Demetrius Johnson Building is empty. In 1968, the Jewish community donated that building to the city for a dollar. And then the deed that I found in the City Hall said that that building is to be used for recreational center. I'm trying to figure out why is all this money going to other recreational centers? And our recreational center that's close to the Delmar Divine is being neglected. And I say because we got a double basketball court, two handball courts, an indoor swimming pool, a gym, and an auditorium, 15 rooms, and we used to have a restaurant on the top level that they're being neglected so the developers come in and purchased it. Our building, our recreational center is just like walls and everything else. We want the city of St. Louis to restore, reopen the West End Community Center. Everything else has been bought up by developers. We don't have anywhere in the community to meet. If this building gets sold, we won't have anything left for the community to come in. And so I vote no on what's been voted on. I just feel like the list that you all came up with is unrealistic. And I think with 330,000 people in St. Louis, when I saw how many people actually voted, the last time I saw, it was like 10,000. So maybe it went up, I don't know, but I don't think that's accurate or something that should determine where this money should go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kautchul, for coming out today and drawing some lines with infrastructure needs. Some of the information that was mentioned as far as ARPA allocations, budget decisions, the good thing is Chairwoman of Budget here, and I saw her taking that. And then there's also a link that we can go to, we can get you some of the information that you requested that you'd like to see. So I'll try to get you a card before you head out, or get a card to you, and I'm happy to send you those links so you can see what's coming as far as those allocations go. Elaine Laura? Thank you, Ms. Laura. If you could just repeat your name, give us your ward number, and then I'll get you sworn in.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Elaine Laura. I'm in the 12th ward.
Thank you, Ms. Laura.
Ms. Tyus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. And do you swear today and attest that your testimony today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You may proceed. Three minutes.
Well, I wish that, first, thank you for this opportunity. I wish that Director Scobie had given us more of his background in terms of the water industry overall. So, Director, how long have you been director?
Ms. Laura, you can't ask any questions to him directly, but you can, in your three minutes, you can stay what you want, and I'll ask when he comes back up for other questions we can ask.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because I really feel as though your view of the water industry is very narrow. And I think that water infrastructure is one of the most dynamic topics on the floor. I got a little jingle. I've been sitting around thinking about my water bill. It's such a bitter pill, since it's based upon the size of the crib. And I think our infrastructure bill should definitely include the implementation and the installation of water meters as a part of a viable business plan that states that providing the best service to the consumer is one of the most essential criteria. So it is very disheartening to see this very elementary presentation from the Director of the Water Department. I mean, all of his needs are in the billions of dollars, but the grants are in $50,000. It doesn't like, he has a realistic view. And from the literature that I read, from the American Water Works Association, which I am a proud member of, there's so, the system is oozing with grant money. I have a little prayer. May your troubles be less and your blessings be more, and nothing but happiness come through the door. Please add the installation of water meters to the water infrastructure request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. I'm going to go on a, did you want to respond, Alderwoman Spencer? I just wanted to make sure, someone is telling me that the audio is not working on YouTube, STLTV?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Laura because I remember her jingle from the budget session last, maybe two years ago, was that it? Was it last year, two years ago? And it made an impression on me then, and it made an impression on me today. And Ms. Gwen, as the Chairwoman pointed out, as the Budget Committee considers, infrastructure will be taking your requests and your concerns seriously.
Thank you. That's all that I see for public testimony. Am I missing, is there anyone else?
We have two speakers online.
Excellent, we can proceed with those individuals.
Give me just a second, we're trying to move them over.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Is everyone else here just for fun? No?
If there's anyone else here present that would like to testify, just make sure that you let us know so we can get you on this forum. Is there anyone else that would like to testify?
Is there more than one topic?
You get three minutes. You can say whatever you want to say. You want to do it?
Madam Chair, is there another topic?
Just water. Just water.
All right, Ms. Noblat, you're going to say your name, your ward number, and then I'm going to get you sworn in.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Lindsay Noblat, and I'm calling in from the beautiful ward, the sixth ward, from the Shaw neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Noblat. And do you affirm and attest that everything you're going to say here is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, you may proceed, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for your time and effort, for putting everything together to have this hearing for the public, especially for the city of St. Louis. I wanted to first and foremost thank all the residents for all of their feedback, and I couldn't be more excited about one of the top five being selected as free subsidized childcare for the city of St. Louis. I have been an active member in the advocacy community in early childhood education for close to a decade, and currently work at Southside Early Childhood Center as the Director of Advocacy and Community Partnerships. As many of you know, we are the oldest childcare facility west of the Mississippi. We've been serving children since 1886. This has been a need in our community for a very long time, and we know parents are up against everything right now to try to pay and try to work and try to get access to high-quality childcare. So I would ask that we continue to have this conversation within this committee on how we can best allocate some of the funds to truly support our moms and our babies to ensure that many more have access to high-quality care, and this is setting up our city for success. Because when we invest in our children, we invest in our city, in our region, in our state as a whole. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Noblat. I'm only upset that you didn't mention that the Southside Early Childhood Center is in the seventh ward, but I agree with everything else in your testimony.
I am a current city resident in the city of the sixth ward, and Southside is located in the seventh ward. Thank you.
You're welcome. No bias. Is there another speaker? Ms. Wright, if you can hear me, are you able to cut your screen on? Cut your camera on?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, could you, Coffee Wright, if you could just repeat your name, say your ward number, and then I'll get you sworn in.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carla Coffee Wright, Board 11.
Thank you, Carla Wright. Do you affirm that what you're about to say here is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, you may proceed, you have three minutes.
Okay, hello, everyone. I would hope that we don't use the money for the Water Division. I would hope that we don't use the money for the Water Division. I believe they're charging too much. We have too many people that are being charged, as myself. We're charged for the same amount of money as our next-door neighbor who may have 900 people in their house. But because of the size of our home, we charge the same price. And that is totally ridiculous. We're not being charged off of the usage of the water, but we're being charged a flat rate. And it's crazy because I'm seldom at home. I'm always in and out of town. I'm always working. I don't use a lot of water. And, and I, and I think it's ridiculous that I have to pay the same amount of water bill as my neighbors. And they may, again, have 900 people in their homes. I agree also with Ms. Cottrell that some of this money, we have a high, a ridiculous crime rate. Crime rate is higher than it, than it was last year this time. And we need these rec centers open throughout St. Louis. And that rec center that she's speaking of was the old Demetrius Center. And they do need to focus on opening, put money into that center before a developer come and get the center. Because those children over there don't have anything and it's too far for them to walk to woes. Not only do they need to put money into that center, but we need to open up more centers throughout the city if possible. Last but not least, they can also consider anyone with a small business that is registered, divide money equally among the small businesses opposed to paying any money, money mo' on what businesses receive funding. Because too many of these businesses don't, they don't live in the city and they may have a business in the city or have an idea of putting a business in the city. But the county have already gotten, I mean, it was over seven, what? Seven million dollars and we only end up with, with about $2 million of the Rams money or whatever. I mean, the county got theirs, the attorney's got theirs, and whoever else had their hand out. And so we keep putting money into other people that's coming to our city, taking advantage of our money. And I think that's foul. I don't, I don't think any small business should be overlooked. So that's my thought. And I appreciate you for allowing me to share it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us today, right, and for giving valuable input. I believe we have an additional speaker online, Ms. Rogers. Just make sure your camera is on, Ms. Rogers. I'm gonna go to the next speaker and we'll circle back. Basmin. Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Ms. Rogers. If you could just say your name and your ward number. I think you're on mute.
Carla Rogers, I'm in the 11th and I want to be sworn in.
And do you swear and attest that everything you're gonna say today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed. You have three minutes.
So thank you for always having given citizens opportunity to say their piece. Before I ask my question, I just want to read the comments by Sister Cottrell and Wright about the Western Community Center. I think Marie Fowler, who had the restoration of that, would just be turning over to her greatest she thought was going to be used for anything other than the community and particularly young people. So I just want to add that in there. And my question is, is there, has there been a comprehensive assessment of the infrastructure needs? And I'm asking that because it seems like there are buying and competing interests about how to use that money. They're not really looking at, first of all, is the finite, finite money. But what are the needs? It seems like a better process might be look at the comprehensive needs and then from there, see how we would go about prioritizing those, those monies would be that goes to the way. Because also what I see with a process like that, whoever is, can organize and lobby for their particular needs is who gets the money and they may not necessarily be the one that is the most needed. So that's, that's pretty much all of what I'm saying. There's a place where there is survey or there's a comprehensive view of actual infrastructure needs. And I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here today, Ms. Rogers. I've got your questions down. We'll repeat those later. Ms., I'm sorry, I don't know the gender, Basmin.
Good afternoon. Yes, I am Basmin Red Deer of the 10th Ward.
Thank you, Ms. River.
Red Deer.
Red Deer. Thank you.
Red like colored deer, like the animal.
Thank you, Ms. Red Deer. Do you affirm that your testimony today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I affirm.
Thank you. You may proceed. You have three minutes.
I must attest that water is life and the concern for access to clean water here and nationally is going to be the commodity as we move forward in the 21st century. I think the expenses that they're speaking about for upgrading our, our infrastructure, as we said, there are many other sources for those, the revenues to assist in that. And I find that the hardship falls upon the people, the residents, the homeowners, who want to have access to clean water but are unable to afford the great cost that it is. I agree with Ms. Rogers that assessment needs to be made about where infrastructure needs to be upgraded in the city. I attest that I have witnessed in my 65 years in this residence here of the intentional neglect that happens over on the north side. I raise my concerns about the Western Community Center at 724 Union that the other people have spoken of, that this, we need to invest in people in the community, that we're not going to be able to change and uplift and upgrade our community and reduce crime and do anything else we need to do if we don't have places for our young people and for our community to gather that is safe, that has resources available, that has exercise and entertainment available. So I was unsettled to see that in some of the investment for recreational centers, that that center was not included in it. Knowing that the city does own it, knowing gentrification is occurring in my neighborhood right now, that if we're trying to be equitable about our treatment and our value of our citizens, we must start with the youth and with places for people to come together. So the investment in the Western Community Center, the opportunity for people to find other options or the city to find other options. Because I too would like to see the meter program. I've been in the house. This is a family home I've been in all this time. I've been here by myself for several years, for decades now. And so my water usage is nowhere near. I don't use, I have three bathrooms and only one isn't used. So the water bills and all of that kind of stuff is a great hardship to maintain. And it is a human right to have access to clean water. I'm also concerned about privatization. I would not want to see privatization of our water systems happen here as it has happened in other cities around the country that puts a greater hardship on people trying to pay their water bill and have access to clean water. We know there are places in the nation that do not have clean water now and that Metropolitan Sewer District has compromised our water several times without advising us. So attention to water and let's get Western Community Center invested in, open, and ready to receive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Red Deer. I always enjoy seeing you. So thank you for joining us today. Our next speaker, and I believe this is our last speaker online, is John Lancaster. If you, Johnson Lancaster, if you could cut your camera on. Okay, well, we will move forward. Director Scobie, do you mind coming back up? Thank you. I'm just gonna ask you the questions that the public raised and then we'll let the alders go in order of seniority to ask their own. Do you mind just telling us, I know a little bit about your background because I've gotten to have some conversations with you, but could you share with the public a little bit about just your experience and background?
Yes, I, I have a BS degree in civil engineer. I have a Master's of Science in Civil Engineering also. I've worked in the City's Ward Division since December 1985.
Can you hold your mic up?
And I've been involved with AWWA here in the Missouri section. Was Chair and Director of that Association. Then I'm also, I sit on the Safe Drinking Water Commission of the, of the State of Missouri.
Thank you, Director Scobie, and for bringing those services and talents to our city. I know it's not easy. So I do want to note that I appreciate it. Have you heard any conversations about the idea of the Water Department using water meters?
Yes, we, we have numerous conversations about water meters. It's a option, a, our residents can have a choice between having a flat rate account or a metered account. It's their choice. The issue that comes up with meters is that the homeowner or property owners expected to hire a plumber to set up the plumbing to accept the meter. We'll provide the meter, but they need to have the plumber set it up. And that's, that's costly to do. And the savings for some people, it takes a long time for them to realize that on their water bill for such an investment. There's pluses and minuses both on flat rate and meters. There's on both systems and it's really incumbent on the resident to take a good, hard look and look at it. Some of the issues I see with meters is that unexpected high water bills due to leakage is one of the bigger, one of the biggest drawbacks. I deal with people calling and asking what can we do to help them out in those situations? And it's, you know, it's, it's a choice right now.
Thank you. I want to remind the audience that we're going to respect our speakers and not speak when they're speaking. And so just so I'm clear, in reference to any residents or anyone watching who's interested in a water meter, right now residents have the option between a flat cost and a water meter. They would need to contact the Water Department in order to request a meter and you guys will provide the meter. But any expenses in the installation and changes to accommodate the meter will be on the expense of the, of the property owner or the resident.
Yes.
Thank you. And have you had any conversations about comprehensive assessment for water infrastructure? I think as you have this list, it might be helpful just to talk about how you identify these priorities and if there is anything that has comprehensively looked at the entire, entire city of where water infrastructure needs are met. And I heard someone also mention equity and so looking at how long, does that comprehensive list, if it exists, did it look at the last time that work was done and make those priorities accordingly?
There's multiple questions there, so if I don't get them all, let me know. These lists that I provide you, these are things that the staff sees in operating of the, the utility. This is to help it maintain the service and operation. One thing that we do need and we are pursuing is a formal study on our needs, needs assessment and with a, a plan to move forward on what it would take to address all the Water Department's needs. And that's currently out for requests for proposals from consulting firms now through the Board of Public Service. It's, it'd be nice to have an outside group come in and take a look at us.
Thank you. So that I'm clear, the public is clear. You're saying that there's an RFP out right now for the comprehensive assessment?
RFQ.
Oh, sorry, RFQ.
Yes.
Thank you. And I think the last thing that was raised by the public, we are a public water company and are there any conversations about privatization?
None that I'm aware of, but I've been here a long time and it keeps resurfacing every now and then. It's an alternate way of managing a utility. But I am aware of no conversations at this time.
Thank you. I hope that suffices our public with you asked questions. Again, any questions you do have additionally, always feel free to. And we can raise them here. And we also have a Public Infrastructure Committee, both the Chair and Vice Chair here. And I know that they are ongoing having conversations. So with that, we will go through the alders in order of seniority. And so that means we'll be starting with Alderwoman Spencer of the Eighth Ward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to defer to the President. She was still on. I'm not sure if she is, but.
She'll go last.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Director Scobie, for being here today and for all the members of the public who weighed in. I do have a couple of questions. Some of them are, I just wanted to quickly go over the budget in a general sense of folks, including myself, have an idea of what we're looking at. It looks like for fiscal year 2025, we have a budget request, an operating budget of around 79 million.
Yes.
Is that correct? And the revenues for the year look to be about 68 million?
Something like that, yes.
Okay, so there's a deficit there of 10 million, 11 million dollars. Is that coming out of the reserve fund? I know, last I looked, we only had about 14 in the Water Division Reserve Fund, although I could be mistaken on that.
Yeah, it would be any reserves that we have. We, if we, we would adjust our spending to the actual money available in the budget. Done this in the past. And we monitor how much we're spending so that we don't overspend. But then if we have the revenue coming in that can support it, then it's approved and we can utilize it.
Okay. The list of, that, the deficit worries me. The difference between what we're, that what we're projecting to spend and the revenues projected. Because the revenues projected does include a pretty hefty increase based on the water rate increase. So we're already anticipating that. And the more I see our residents leaving our city, I see dollar bills going with them, water bills being part of what they contribute to our overall budget. You know, one of the downsides of the way our Water Department is, is created is that there's a hard cost of producing water. We're not producing it on a per gallon basis necessarily. It's the, it's a big old system. So those of us who live in the city or operate a business in the city have to pay for the function of the Water Department. We do sell some to St. Louis. Get into that in the budget when we get into more details of that. But we do have a hard cost of producing water, regardless of how many people consume it, which is the unfortunate reality. I share the concerns and the desire of several speakers today that I don't want to see this privatized. Access to water is going to be one of the world's most valuable resources as climate change and other things take place. It's imperative that we keep our Water Department. And so the next set of questions I have for you, I don't want to be confused. I, I want to make sure that I, my intention here is to make sure that our water remains public, remains the high quality that we have and that every resident have, in the city, has access to it. These list of capital needs are not small. Despite having an annual revenue source of 68 million dollars, despite what several speakers have pointed out that, you know, we do have a high cost of water when you look at the flatness of the rate, you know, especially for single, single individuals, folks that aren't watering their lawn, don't have, you know, don't have gardens, et cetera. It is a burden. That being said, I know our cost is lower than the national average by a long shot, which is a good thing. I'm, I think that's great. And it'd be helpful, I think, in future presentations if you could present that piece of the positive story. On the flip side, our MSD bills are astronomical and are higher. The, the cost to take the water away is quite higher than the cost of providing the water. But those two things are related because your MSD bill is directly related to your water bill. So when you're not metered on the water side, you're also not metered. So when you're not metered on the water side, you're also not metered on the SD side, the metropolitan sewer district side, which is problematic on a lot of different fronts. This list of capital needs, I don't disagree that any of these things are necessary. Can you, one thing that's missing total, and I'm sorry if you mentioned that and I don't see it somewhere, but what is, I tried to add these up and then I got lost.
It was 128.5 million dollars.
128.5 million dollars. So that would be essentially three years of revenue. And we, that would be a very, that's a lot. And we don't, we're not currently producing excess. One of the questions I've had over the years, in 2000, I just saw yesterday, I believe, that the Biden administration announced a $3 billion federal program to replace lead pipes. You alluded to that, or at least some of that money in some of the requests for the $50,000 for the plan, the 5 million that were requesting to implement it. My calculations say it'd be about, if we did, if we got the national average, we'd get about 3 million total. I'm glad we're going above and beyond what that would potentially mean as far as a population estimate. One thing we haven't discussed and you didn't discuss here was that in 2019, when Biden was first elect, 2021, excuse me, when Biden was first elected, the Biden-Harris administration announced a 111 billion dollar water infrastructure plan. My math, if, given the population at that time, which unfortunately was, is higher than it is now, I think it was around 300,000. We're now at about 280,000 West resident. But I calculate that our share of that 111 billion dollars to be around 110 million dollars, which would get us pretty close to the 125 million dollar need list. Did the city of St. Louis receive its fair share of that 111 billion dollar water infrastructure fund money that was, that was announced in 2021? I don't know if it's all been distributed. I don't, I'm not, I don't follow that intimately. But at the time, there was large announcements, there was large tours from the national representatives of the EPA, Congress, our mayor, everybody else was down at the water department saying what a great day this was and how much money the city of St. Louis was gonna get. And it's my understanding that we've received around 220,000 of what I calculate to be our fair share of 110 million. It's a long-winded question, Director Scobie. How much money have we gotten out of that 111 billion dollars?
Well, the money that we're getting from the federal government, they're providing with the ARPA and Build America Plan, Infrastructure Plan, is administered, it comes from the feds, is administered through the state of Missouri to distribute it to the utilities. And my list there, what I provided is what funds that we have gotten. And so it's the federal rules and processes, but then you also have the state processes of doing it too, that we are applying for these funds when they're available and under these guidelines. And this is what we've gotten so far.
So of the, so how much have we gotten so far? You said we've got some, I see here we've got some of this East Grand funded through ARPA. But I'm sorry, Director Scobie, I keep calling, wanting to call you Doctor, Director Scobie. What, but where are the projects that have been funded out of that federal pot? That is outside of the ARPA funds that we, but was part of this federal program specifically for water infrastructure?
Well, some of these are the bipartisan infrastructure law funds that I've listed there.
Where, I'm sorry, Director Scobie, where are you looking?
I'm looking at the state funding. So some of the Item 1 grant, that is $200,000, that came out of ARPA that's administered through the state.
Where are you looking, Doctor?
What number, maybe what number?
Well, on the...
Document. I'm looking at this capital project needs and I've got...
It may be the last page. I can get you...
Say that again.
It's 14. Are you referencing 14?
What I have here is a letter from your office that includes a project list. Oh, I see what you've got here. We've also got a funding for these projects that's come through the water and we've got some things that have been completed. That was not part of this capital needs list, part of this letter list. Okay. So you've got supply and purifying, replace two line feeders. Is that what you're looking at, the 225,000 in that, completed in fiscal year 2024?
That came out of our regular budget.
I'll look wherever you direct me to.
If it's not on this document, Director Scobie, you need to get that to us. You can let us know that as well.
It may not, I'm not finding it in that document.
While we're looking for this document, I failed to recognize, Director. Because we, you're getting railed on a lot and we're all very frustrated with the water. But the water is delicious.
Thank you.
And I really do appreciate that.
Yes, well, you look at our source water, it doesn't look that way, but they actually good.
It actually doesn't, look at it in the river, where it comes from.
Yes.
And you take all that brown right out of it. We're grateful.
Do you need more time to get the, to get the information that Alderwoman Spencer requested, Director Scobie?
Yeah, I think so. I apologize, I thought I had it in the package that I...
No, that's okay.
And apparently it didn't get attached. But I can provide that as a follow-up.
Yeah, and I can...
There's gonna be a board bill coming to the board to accept these funds from the state of Missouri.
Those, okay, how many funds?
It is a $200,000 grant, additional $400,000 grant, a $50,000 grant and a $5 million grant.
Okay, so we're looking at a total of around 6 million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is that just based on an average, you know, if you look at 111 billion and you divide it by the population of the United States and then you multiply it by the population of the city of St. Louis, you get what our weighted average based on population would be. I calculate that to be around 110 million, depending on the population in our loss. But 6 million, while that's considerable and I'm glad we're getting that, is a fraction of what I believe to be what our, what our, so fair share of that would be. And that was really designed to help communities in great need. And I would argue that the city of St. Louis is in pretty high need. And so I want to make sure that we are getting our fair share of those federal funds before we start applying. The concern I have about the Rams money, we run this money because we lost the Rams. And the Rams provided a very large income stream to our city. They provided tourism, they provided all these other revenue streams. Now we've got this stupid dome that is a drain and it's also a big, you know, eyesore as far as I'm concerned. I know it's being used to some extent, but at the end of the day, we have this giant building that was built for a team that's not here. So it's also a liability in a lot of ways. And if, you know, we've got to figure out a way to drive revenue out of those funds that we are awarded specifically because we lost the revenue of the Rams. So we have to be thinking about our future and, and as well, I want to exhaust every single opportunity or stream of revenue that is available to fix the very high level of needs in our infrastructure and our water department. There's no doubt we need to do these, Director Scobie, and I'm grateful we have a list to work from. Just want to make sure that we're exhausting the possibilities of funding it. So if we could get the list of, I mean, it sounds like we're gonna have a board bill coming through for the 6 million. But I want to know what, where the list of funded projects out of the state of Missouri is. If there are, if the state of Missouri is the entity distributing the Missouri share of the 111 billion dollars, I want to know where it is going in the state of Missouri. Because we supply not only water to the city, but we're supplying Missouri American Water, St. Louis County and surrounding areas. All right, all right. I'll get to the others. But if you could supply that, it'd be very helpful.
I will.
I have a whole lot of other questions, but the chair's encouraging me to share the microphone. So I'll do that.
Thank you, Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Thank you, Director Scooby, for being here today. So as Alderwoman Spencer alluded to, we do contract with a few other places to sell water. Do you know when those contracts are up?
I don't know all of them offhand when they're up. We do have one with Missouri American that's up in 2025.
Okay, yeah, because it seems from just some of the conversations that I've had on this that we may want to renegotiate that deal when it comes back up because I don't see other people building water treatment facilities to deal with this. This is yet another issue that the region seems to place at the feet of the city of St. Louis and say, you guys do it all and we aren't getting the help from the state that we're supposed to. Even as Alderwoman Spencer alluded to, even when the federal government comes and, you know, gives money out to address exactly this kind of thing. And I know I'm frustrated with it, but I can't imagine how frustrated you must be with it, Director. But those are some, I think, pressure points that we probably need to look into. And then I'll just close with a comment. You know, I, I think that we do need to make sure that we use these Rams settlement funds on one-time spends and then workforce issues, hiring on and maintaining vibrant workforce, a vibrant workforce here in the city of St. Louis. Because ongoing spends, when the money's gone, it'll be gone. So I'm a big proponent of putting, putting the funds into an endowment to keep workers on because as we run into these issues, both with water and streets and other aging infrastructure, the one thing in common with all of them is that it takes man-hours to get things done. And if we can't stay competitive with pay and benefits, we are not going to be able to maintain the workforce that we need to, to deal with these issues as they continue to arise. Thank you again, Director, for being here. Thank you for the great work. As the Alderwoman said, the water is delicious. I thank you for that and have a good day, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ryan, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. We will come back per your request. Alderwoman Switzer had to step away, so I believe that puts us at Alderman Browning.
Thank you. And can you clarify something for me first? Is it Scooby or Scobie?
It's Scobie.
Scobie, okay.
But I hear Scooby so much, it's no big deal.
Yeah, I've heard both, so I just wanted to be sure. All right, well, thank you so much for being here today. Just a couple of quick questions. So when I add all these needs up that you gave us on these capital projects, I get 129.7 million dollars. The idea is, is that not all of these could be completed in one year potentially. Would there be an advantage to the water division to use perhaps some of the interest off of the Rams settlement fund to put a portion of that towards the water division each year so that you can complete some of the projects? And is there a certain urgency to get these done in a certain amount of time? Or do some of them have a closer timeline than others?
These are, they don't have to be done this year or now. It's a, but they do have to eventually be done. And so it's a, we have a little bit of time to address all of those. And I would think if we're gonna address these, if we do a loan through the state revolving fund like we've done in the past with a subsidized interest rate, it'd be a good, these projects would be good for that. The Rams, if we go with a, end up with an endowment fund, get a certain amount, that could be very beneficial to like help pay off that loan over time. And it makes sense, most of these, it's costly to do these investment. It makes sense to spread it out over 20, 30 years because they're gonna last multiple times of that. I mean, we have like 1,300 miles of water main that we maintain and you gotta figure at least a million dollars a mile to, to renew them or replace them. So it's, it's large, large sums of money.
Yeah, I see that. And one of the criticisms, criticisms I've heard is that we just raised the water rate last year and you spoke to that a little bit. No, we did build in a consumer price index increase into that, so hopefully we keep up with the cost of operation. But the criticism is that the water division should have money to pay for that. Can you provide a clarification on what that water rate increase was done to pay for?
That water rate increase, or those two, were necessary to cover the basic operations of the utilities. Like everybody in their personal life, they see the pressures of inflation, things going up. It's also there to do the repairs that show up in the course of the year, like Penn Roads up there this past weekend break. That'll come out of our annual budget, not part of a capital improvement project.
But it was not for capital projects, correct?
Right, overall it's not. We're hoping to get maybe a loan with this additional revenue.
Thank you. I think that's an important clarification to make is that the additional money, and you said you still aren't sure exactly what the impact of that rate increase will be at the next billing cycle from, I understand from your comments. But that, that is really for the day-to-day operation, including the frequently breaking pipes that we have because our infrastructure is over 100 years old. So I really appreciate that clarification. I, last question I have for you is, when, I had the opportunity to tour the water treatment plant at the Chain of Rocks last year. I really appreciate that opportunity because it helped me understand a lot of how our infrastructure works. One of the things I saw when I was there was that you have several water pumps on the floor, but you, you or someone had said that only a few of those are actually in operation and that some of them are not in operation and would actually need to be either replaced or repaired before being put into operation. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it's a moving, moving situation because when we do have a pump fail, we will repair it and, and put it back in service. So you, when we do that, it's, is back in service. Our goal is to maintain them, but it's, they're at their, end of their life expectancy at 60 years old. So we're seeing them fail at a more frequent rate and, and those aren't pumps that you can go down to the store and buy off the shelf to replace.
And then one comment you had made to me is that while we do have a population that's about a third of what it used to be, that the water division has to maintain a certain amount of pressure through the system in order for it to continue working. So even though we still, even though we have fewer people to service, we still have to create a certain level of service in order to keep that system functioning?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's some base costs, fixed costs, like the treatment plants and the distribution system. It doesn't, the cost doesn't really change a whole lot with the population. If lower population, you're treating less water, so you save on chemicals and electricity. But you still have to staff the treatment plant the same as you would if we had our old population. You know, that's where the wholesale accounts come in handy, that we have excess capacity, we can sell it, water to them and we bring in five to six million dollars a year. That's money we can utilize to help our operation and also deliver our service to the citizens of St. Louis.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And thank you again for the work you do. I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for those questions, Alderman Browning. Alderman Aldridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. And thank you, Director, for being here. Just for clarification, since we are online, and I know we're talking about infrastructure, but solely focused on water right now. The water division did just get, I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, or if I'm right, Director? I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, or if I'm right, Director, you guys just did get a nice amount of money from ARPA, as well, as you said, there's a potential board bill where we'll be getting additional funds from the state, correct?
Yes, the board bill will be allowing us to accept those grants that the state had, we're qualified for.
Gotcha. No questions. I'm happy Alderman Brown brought up most of my questions. And I just wanted to plug, as you mentioned, the, you know, there's been a lot of horrible water main breaks that have been happening across the city of St. Louis, especially one that just happened in my ward at Blair and Penrose that was out for about, that was going off about three days. Understand it wasn't just a pipe bust, but also a valve bust. But no questions, just wanted to put that comment out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Chairwoman, I don't think she's on the list that I can see. I think she's off.
All right. Well, I don't have any questions. I would just give a thank you to you again, Director Scobie. And I want to apologize too for my St. Louis accent and saying it wrong. I'm so sorry. But thank you so much for being here. I know that you have a tireless, you know, a tireless job. I know that there are a lot of unique but universal struggles across departments. And I think that us having this conversation today will better equip my colleagues and I to move things forward that can help, especially for as our Water Division. And with that, I just want to make sure we don't have any other questions and that President Green wasn't wanting to cap off. So just one second. Okay. And with that, I will entertain a motion to continue the committee of the hold for June 4th at 3:30 PM here in the Kennedy Room and virtually.
So moved?
Yes, all right. It was moved by Alderwoman of the Eighth and seconded by the Alderman from, from the Ninth. Thank you. That we reconvene June 4th at 3:30 PM in the Kennedy Room and virtually. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.